So first off, thanks for joining us tonight. I know it's probably one of the nicest days we'll have all year out there. So instead, we're in a dark auditorium, listening about parliamentary procedure, which could put a few people to sleep, but I'll do my best. But thanks again for coming from 6:00 until 7:00 at the latest. We're going to talk a little bit about what open town meeting is. We have not had an open town meeting since 1968. So we wanted to... We wanted to just offer an opportunity for those that wanted to find a little more out about town meeting, an open town meeting in particular, since this is new to Lee in the last 50 years to do this. So then if...we may have a little break, depending on how many questions there are. And then from at 7:00, the selectmen will go over the warrant and as more of an informal review and allow for questions. And again, just so everyone's clear, there's no voting happening tonight. Again, this is informational. We're talking about what town meeting is and then going over the warrant articles. And anybody will have a chance to ask questions before the town meeting. So just a chance to get familiar with what's on the warrant. The actual town meeting will be on May 11th, same place, at 7:00. And that's when the voting will happen, so. So I wanted to start off with some objectives to let you know kind of what we're talking about tonight. We're going to first try to talk about the legal basis for town meeting. Everything in this presentation, I've tried to connect to either a town bylaw or rules of order or state laws, just so you could kind of see where we're basing this on. We're going to talk about the different roles of town meeting, a little bit about the warrant and the articles, the scope of motions. And then we'll go over some, not all of the subsidiary and incidental motions that could take place once a motion is made on a warrant article. There's a lot more. People study this stuff for years, so it's not something we'll get to every single motion in an hour, but we'll try to hit the basics. Next, recognize proper debate and meeting decorum, identify voting methods and quantum of vote, and then finally, what happens after town meeting after we voted? So the legal basis for town meeting starts with the Massachusetts general law, and I will cite that throughout the presentation where that comes into play. And of course, town meeting is very unique to New England. If you go to outside of the New England states, you have town councils that might meet monthly or every couple of weeks, and it's a small group of 10 or 12 people that make these decisions. But in New England, we still have town meeting where every registered voter becomes a legislative body for their town. So we start with general law, then we have our town bylaws, then we have our rules of order, which is very similar to Robert's Rules, but it's a special book just for Massachusetts town meetings. It's called Town Meeting Time, that has the parliamentary law. And then, believe it or not, there's...then falls onto tradition, but being that we're a new open town meeting, we don't have a lot of open town meeting tradition right now to go to. So there's four essential components to holding a town meeting. First, the moderator has to be present. Second, the clerk has to be present. So for those of you who are not familiar, the moderator would be up here running the meeting, the clerk would be taking the minutes. We have to have a properly executed warrant, which for an annual town meeting is posted one week in advance at the minimum. We're hoping to do that actually on Tuesday to have it officially signed. We have a draft out already, so we'll be way ahead of that. And then a quorum. And our new quorum for our open town meeting is 50 residents, 50 registered voters will constitute a quorum. So if you look at those numbers, if the moderator and the clerk is here, as well as the select board members, the town council, the finance chair, and the town administrator are all Lee registered voters, we're at eight of those already. So we would need 42 other registered voters to show up in order to have the meeting. If we don't get at least that number, we can't hold the town meeting. And I forgot to mention, but if anyone has any questions, just raise your hand. I'll take questions at the end, but if you have anything during the meeting...not you, Chief Brown. Sure, sure. I will be happy to take any during the meeting as well, but we'll have time at the end if you'd like to, so.
If we don't make quorum as the department head, do we go into deficit spending until we can reschedule?
So we have some...we will hopefully reschedule a meeting in time for that to pass our budget, but there are...I won't get into those details tonight, but hopefully, we have until the June 1st to hopefully reschedule that, so. Sorry, July 1st, not June 1st. So there will be a new procedure, a check-in when you come to town meeting. It'll be just like coming into voting. There'll be people out front here with our poll pads, and it'll be just like checking into a town election or a state election. You would need to be a registered voter. When you're...if you check in, you will get a lanyard that looks like this, which will have your voter card, a remote voting clicker, and you'll get a little receipt. And that will give you the voting privileges during the town meeting.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
I have a number of people, citizens, if it drops below that number during the meeting, does that stop the meeting?
Only if somebody calls for the quorum to be counted. So if it drops below 50 and nobody calls quorum, we continue. But if somebody does ask for a count and we fall below, we have to stop. And then we would adjourn the meeting and then set another date before we adjourn. So the only thing we could do without a quorum is vote on when we would have our second half of the meeting, so. But good question. Sorry about the small print on this. It looked bigger on my computer earlier, but the warrant, as I mentioned, it's posted at least a week in advance. Again, we plan to have that up officially next week. The warrant is prepared by the select board, it's reviewed by the...sorry, received by the clerk and stamped by the clerk, and then it's posted by a constable. And so the constable will post that in five public places, including the website. On that warrant will be articles, and they're specific items that we need to discuss at town meeting. We can't do any other business or discuss anything else that's not on the warrant at town meeting. We can only do what's been warned to the public. And the reason for that is people...if we started doing something that's not on the warrant, somebody could say, geez, if that was on there, I would have come, but you didn't have that on the warrant. So we can only deal with what's on there. But from that article, typically, the selectmen will make a main motion. So our first warrant article on this draft warrant that's out is to receive the reports of the selectman, town administrator, et cetera. So the motion might be something like, I move to accept the reports of the selectman, town accountant, and so forth. Then a member would second that, and then we would open it up for discussion.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Just a question.
Sure.
Is it just majority rule? So if it's 49 to 48, then it passes?
Mostly, but I'm going to go into that a little bit later. There's a couple of questions that will be two-thirds vote, and every once in a while, we have a four-fifths. But most of them are majority. Cornelia?
Can we get our copy of the warrant next week?
Yeah, it'll be online. We'll have copies available at town hall, and they'll be posted at the library, the post office, like we typically do, but...
Is it south Lee?
Yeah, it goes to South Lee, Lee Library, Town Hall, and I'm forgetting one place, but yes, it'll be... So this is what the warrant looks like. There's a...some text at the top saying when town meeting will be. You can see that up here, it's...this is when it's legally posted, when the town clerk stamps that in. We have the articles, and then again, from those articles, we will make motions. But we have to go through each of those, even if it means that we're going to postpone them, or postpone them indefinitely, or fail them, or whatever. We have to deal with everything that's on this before we can end the meeting. So scope is an interesting thing, and if you notice the citation at the top, this one is mostly from case law because it's kind of a gray area. But basically, the main motion has to fall within the scope of the article. So I give a few examples here. If we had an article that said, purchase a plow truck for $100,000, it would be acceptable to make a motion on the floor to say, let's purchase a plow truck for $98,000. But it would not be okay to say, let's purchase a fire truck for $100,000, because the warrant articles, that would not be within the scope. If we had an amendment, again, it has to be within the scope. If we had a motion to purchase a police cruiser and somebody wanted to make that more specific to say, an SUV, Ford Police Cruiser, that would be okay. But if we...somebody amended it to say, oh, I don't want a police cruiser, instead I want to get a dump truck, that would not be within the scope. We can't do that. And we also have a bylaw that says the monetary amount, we can not increase by more than 5%. So you can decrease monetary amounts, but if we go over 5%, that's kind of considered beyond the scope of what we told the public. So the budget, we do handle a little bit differently, and we're going to...the plan is to continue to do this like we did when we had reps, which many towns do this, whether you're open or representative. And that is that we will read the entire budget line by line. A motion will be made to pass all of the items that are not held. And then if somebody wants to discuss and vote separately on an item, on a particular budget line item, you can move to hold that. And so if we get to, say, the town administrator's budget, and you want to talk about that more, you can say, hold. At the end of reading all of those line items, we'll take one vote on the non-held items, those get passed, and then we go back and discuss and vote separately on each of the held items. Does that make sense to everybody? Question? Yeah?
Can the public, once you ask to hold the item, can the public then get out and make arguments pro and con versus the line?
Yeah, absolutely. That's exactly the idea. Yep, so if there was a budget you wanted to hold, we would hold that budget. We'd open it up for discussion. Everybody who wanted to talk about it could, and then we'll vote on that separately. Although, as anything that's not held, we will just take in one vote, we'll approve all the non-held items, and then deal with the others, one by one. So some other things can happen. I kind of alluded to an amendment before, but other things can happen once a motion is made, and they're subsidiary or incidental motions, we call them. I picked out some of the more common ones, and I'll go over these in more detail. As I mentioned, you could amend that. We have that happen from time to time. Sometimes it's just a...maybe a grammatical error, sometimes it's a changing-of-money thing, sometimes it's something, you know, a little more substantial. Postpone indefinitely is kind of a weird way of saying you want to just kill the motion. I'm not sure why they call it postpone indefinitely, but it's essentially just if you move to postpone it indefinitely, you want to go right to failing that motion and getting it...you know, you're basically in a nice way killing that. Division of a question can be used sometimes. We have two articles in particular that deal with multiple omnibus budgets. So our capital budget, for example, and our non-departmental budget has about eight or 10 different items in it. They are put down as one omnibus article, but if you're going down there and see that on the capital, maybe you want to talk separately about a new backhoe for the DPW, and you don't want to approve that in one large omnibus budget. You can move to divide that, take it separately, and it would kind of work like the budget would, the main budget would, where you would...we would vote on all the others and then come back to that one separately. So that can be used sometimes. We also have something called previous question, or more commonly, it's referred to as call the question. And you'll notice in red, it says two-thirds vote there. When there's two-thirds, and this was one of the questions, we just had most things are majority, but for the subsidiary and incidental motions, anything that takes away a member's right to speak is going to be a two-thirds vote. So if you call the question, that's basically saying, I want to stop all debate, nobody else talks, we go right to a vote. So we do that as a two-thirds vote, meaning that at least two-thirds of the people in the room have to vote to do that. If it fails, then we continue discussion. If it passes, we end all debate, we go right to a vote. Yeah, Anne?
So if one question says, call the question?
Yeah.
Do they have to have a certain amount of other people that agree with that?
Well, they need to have a second. They can ask...they can move to call the question. Somebody needs to second it, and then two-thirds of the people in the room have to vote for it before we actually stop debate. So it's got to get at least two-thirds. So you figure at that point, if two-thirds of the people have made up their mind, you know, we'll move on, but it's got to be a full two-thirds. Josh?
So if there's a specific line item to the budget that is problematic, and we then discuss the debate, is there a proper procedural thing to do if you want to quash that budget item, is call for it to be postponed indefinitely, or is there another thing that you could do to defeat that budget?
Well, you could vote no for it, too. You could just vote against it, yeah. The postpone indefinitely is kind of...it happens every once in a while, and it's typically if there's something on there that we put on the warrant, and then between posting the warrant and having it, we find out that we don't need it anymore. So rather than moving it and going through all the things that oftentimes, some of the side moved to postpone indefinitely, or some of the...when we had representative, was oftentimes referred to as pass over the motion. So that's typically when that's used, is if we find, geez, we, you know, we thought we needed this, but then we just found out we don't, we'll skip it, you know?
Passover is different than that?
Passover is the same as postpone indefinitely. Some people confuse it with tabling it, too, but it doesn't really make sense to table anything at a town meeting, because we're not going to meet...when are we tabling it, too? There's no other meeting to table it to unless we go over two nights, so.
If an amendment is made to a budget, is that the proper procedural thing to do and moderator?
So some of the amendments, we will ask for it to be in writing, especially if it's a longer amendment. We will call a recess and ask that the person put that amendment in writing, just so that we make sure we get it done properly. If it's a small amendment, sometimes we can handle those on the floor, but there have been definitely instances where we've called a recess, asked the person to come up, put it in writing, so we make sure it's done right. The other two-thirds vote, which is right below that, is limit or extend debate. So our default debate is everyone can just talk once for five minutes, at the most, and then you're allowed a second debate after that, after everyone else has had a chance to go. And they're limited to two at five minutes. But with a two-thirds vote, we could either extend that and make it longer, or we could limit it and make it less. So if someone moved, well, I want the debate to be three minutes, or only one debate and not two, that again is a two-thirds vote, because you're taking away people's right to speak, yeah.
Does it yield your time to a previous speaker?
No, no yielding of time, so. But 10 minutes is a pretty good amount of time.
But you can't...if there's somebody, some expert or something, you can say, I gave my vote to somebody?
You could move to give that person more time. It would just be...it would be a two-thirds vote, so if you want to give...
I have done this, but if you have some expert that you want from not Lee, does that yield my time?
Well, if there was a official that was trying to answer a question and needed more time, you know, that was answering a question for the residents, you know, or trying...making a presentation on a project that we were voting on, there's ways we can offer them more time, but... The other one is point of order, and then adjourn versus dissolve. And I'm going to go into those in a little more detail here. I kind of talked about these three already, and I realize they're a little hard to see. But if the amend...again, you're either adding something, removing something, replacing something in a motion. So you can say, I move to add these words to the end, you can strike words out of it, or you can change words. We kind of talked about the postpone indefinitely already and the division. Again, previous question, limit debate, both two-thirds vote. And then these last three, the point of order is to identify some type of breach of a rule. Most commonly, maybe somebody has been talking more than five minutes, they're on seven or eight minutes, a point of order, this person's gone over their five minutes. The moderator rules on all points of order. Typically, they would say, yeah, that's correct, you know, sir or madam, you can wrap up your debate. So that's to point out some kind of issue, some kind of breach of any kind of rule, a parliamentary rule in the meeting. Adjourn versus dissolve, it's a little confusing sometimes, because we think of ending a meeting by adjourning, but when we adjourn the meeting, that idea is that we're coming back. So if we were to go into two nights or three nights of town meeting, we could adjourn and then come back on the next session of that town meeting. But when we're done with the town meeting, once we've dispensed with all of the articles, we dissolve the town meeting. That would be the final motion that's made.
Is it fair to say that debate should all be directed through the moderator? And if the moderator seeks an answer from an official, that would count towards the official's five minutes? That would be an answer to the debate?
Correct, yeah. And we're going to get into that part in a little bit. But yeah, if someone's answering a question, then we...even if they're not...you know, if any town official that's answering a question for somebody, even if they're not a resident, we would...and I believe most of them here are, but, you know, we would want to be able to answer the question for that resident. So reconsider is one final one, and I put it on its own slide, because it's kind of an interesting motion, a motion to reconsider. And we've...this is never a problem at a representative town meeting, but it is a big problem at some open town meeting. So kind of put it on its own slide here. Reconsider brings something back that was previously voted on, and a lot of towns have some additional rules for this. We added a few additional rules here in Lee as well. By town meeting time, you have to be on the prevailing side to make it, so you can't move to reconsider unless you were on the winning side of it. It's a two-thirds vote, not a majority, and you can only make it once on a motion. But what this does, reconsider, what you hear happening occasionally is, maybe you have a big school budget or something that all the parents come, we vote on the budget, it passes, they're all like, great, I don't want to stay around here for the rest of this, and they all go home. And then the next morning, they open up the newspaper and see that their budget that they thought passed actually failed, because somebody in the room said, I moved to...you know, after they all left, said, I moved to reconsider the school budget. And then it came up for a vote again, and all the people that came to vote on it are gone, and then it failed. So it's a precautionary tale here to say that, you know, if...first of all, if you're really passionate about something, stay for the whole meeting, but second, if, you know, we did try to take a little more...make it a little more difficult, it's not impossible to do, but it is a two-thirds. You can only make it once, you can't keep bringing up reconsider again, but...and again, by our rules of order, you have to be on the prevailing side. But I've seen cases, not in Lee, but in other cases, where, you know, somebody will purposely vote in favor just so they can reconsider after to fail it, so. So this kind of touches on a little bit about what Ryan just asked. Debate and decorum. Debate is five minutes, two debates. It has to be related to the motion, you have to be recognized by the moderator. And so you would...met a moderator, they would call on you, you'd come up to speak. We ask that we try not to make anything personal when you're debating, try to avoid using names. It's better in better decorum to say, well, I disagree with the previous speaker, or, you know, something like that. But we want to try to maintain some civility in that. Again, you have to be recognized. We ask that you come up to the microphones. There's one here, and there'll be one over there as well, I'm borrowing it right now. And state your name and address when you come up to the microphone. If you're not a registered voter of the town of Lee, you can speak with an approval of majority of the voters that are in the room. Hopefully, this never has to happen, but, you know, per Mass General law, the moderator can remove someone who after the warrant continues to disrupt the meeting. But again, we do ask for a couple of reasons. Use the microphones. One, we do televise the meetings, so that's the only way to hear it on CTSB, but also so everyone in here can. And I'm kind of waiting to see...I know we have a few reps here that will be back again to see who the first one is that says Chris Britton, District 4, you know? But you just have to say your address now, so. All right, and the voting methods, we had this question earlier. So the way we're planning to vote is everyone will get one of these. We have 350 of these, and they're very simple. There's a green button, a red button, and a yellow button, yes, no, and abstention. So we...by bylaw, our main voting method will be electronic vote. If we have more than three...sorry, 365 people show up, we will run out of these. So we have to go to, first off, a voice vote we'll do, where we'll just say, all those in favor say aye, all those opposed say no. If it seems like it's close, we'll ask you to use your voter card, which looks like this, and we'll have you hold that up, and we'll count the voter cards, okay? Or if for some reason, technology fails us, which never happens, then we would go to those as a backup, so. And I'll show you a picture in a second, but before I go over to that picture of what the voting will look like, the most motions are majority vote, but we do have some main motions that are a two-thirds vote, and those are when we're doing any kind of borrowing. So if we're borrowing or financing anything, it's automatically a two-thirds vote. If we're approving a zoning bylaw change, it's a two-thirds vote. If we're taking anything by eminent domain, it's two-thirds. And finally, if we're taking money in or out of our stabilization account, it's a two-thirds vote as well. So we have a couple of those on here. We have stabilization on this warrant. We have a couple financing, nothing big. It's a...one is a truck, actually, so it's a small financing, but it's still a two-thirds vote. And then we have two zoning articles.
Yeah, so we actually voted to get rid of the district rep former government. I accidentally hit the wrong button, like quickly, but we had sheets that we were checking off alongside of our votes. Are we going to be doing those sheets for people also, or not?
No, and actually, so I'll get to that in a little bit, but the voting for open meeting, it's kind of opposite of representatives. In the representative meeting, we want to know how each and every person voted. They're representing other...they have constituents, and those constituents have a right to know. But an open town meeting is meant to be more anonymous. You're voting for yourself, and that's it. I'm not voting for anyone else, I'm not representing anybody. So it's almost like being in a voting booth, you know? So yeah, there won't be any...but I will show you how you'll know if your vote counted or not in a second. So obviously, if we use the old-fashioned method, you'll know when you're holding up for aye or nay, and...but with the electronic, I'm going to show you a screen in a minute that'll explain what that looks like, yeah.
There won't be any standing votes ever?
I mean, there could be, but you could stand, but it mostly would be holding your card up, because we have the voter cards now. Before, with reps, they were in one section, so we knew that. But standing votes would only be as a backup, you know? The other two on here, four-fifths vote is only if we're voting to approve an expenditure from the previous fiscal year, and a nine-tenths vote is the same thing, but during a special town meeting from a previous fiscal year, a special town meeting is a nine-tenths vote. And so this is what the clicker looks like. These bottom two buttons are...they don't do anything, so you can...what's that? Oh, nine-tenths vote is a previous fiscal year during a special town meeting. So there's a little screen up here. The moderator will say, go ahead and cast your vote. You can hit yes, no, or abstain. When you hit one of those buttons, it appears on the screen, so you know, okay, I voted yes, and it's going to show you that. If... If you want to change your mind, you can change it as many times as you want, but once the moderator says we're going to close the vote, whatever your last button you hit is what's going to get locked in. So there's going to be a screen, the same screen here, and there will be, can't see it on here, but on the smaller screen, but all of the numbers of each clicker will be on here. And on the back, for example, this one is number 325. So, once you vote, your box, box number 325 turns from gray to blue, you know you've casted your vote. And then, once the vote is closed, your box turns to either green or red, saying you voted in favor or against, so you know your vote went through. And then, all the numbers appear up here, and it says, there's this many yes, this many no, motion passes or motion fails. Any questions on that? The numbers don't matter, they're randomly assigned. If you want people to know, you can say, "Hey, everybody, I'm number 100," so you can all see how I voted. But otherwise, it's only, you're only identified by the number, so. So the last thing before I open it up for other questions is, a lot of people ask, "What happens after a town meeting?" The first thing is, that a lot of people are confused about is, town meeting is authorizing purchases. So if you vote to approve a $10 million budget for the town administrator, you know, we don't have to spend all $10 million, but, and, you know, we, and I don't think I would, but anyway, we would, you know, we could vote to buy a new plow truck, for example, and then the DPW might say, "Oh geez, we realize this other one's still good." I know we wouldn't do that, Dave, but, and we don't need it. So you've authorized to buy the truck, but we don't necessarily, it doesn't necessarily mean we will. We can't buy it without the authorization of town meeting. But just so you know, if you, sometimes some people are confused, "Well, we voted to do that." Well, we voted to authorize doing it, but then we decided, afterwards, the select board decided we, we didn't need to do that anymore. So again, you're authorizing it, 99% of the time it happens, but it's occasionally, it doesn't. The other thing is, anytime we vote on a town bylaw, including zoning, it goes through the Attorney General's office, and then it gets either approved, or amended, or rejected by the Attorney General. We've had a lot of bylaws go through no problem, but we have had a couple that they said, "No, it's does not, it conflicts with the Massachusetts Constitution, and you can't have that bylaw." So, so that does happen. In other, other things have to go to referendum. For example, when we did the change to open town meeting, that actually had to go to the state legislature for approval, and then the state legislature said, "Well, before we'll approve it, we want it to go to your referendum," and that happened as well, so. So just to kind of show you what happens afterwards, once we all leave here, most of the stuff that's voted on is going to happen, but some require a few extra steps, so. With that, if any final questions? Yeah, Jan?
I notice, Chris, just, I know this isn't the exact thing, but in years past, it said we have a finance committee that reviews, and a lot of times, it helps me to see that the finance committee, that would, with a certain group, and they've looked through it and picked through everything. Will it again say if the finance committee approves or doesn't approve?
Yeah, I think, unless you're looking at the summary, the one I have does-
Is it already on there?
The draft should say capital outlay and finance committee recommendations on there. You won't see it start till Article VII.
Oh, maybe not.
Which actually, I'm glad you mentioned that, because seeing this, I did want to mention one other thing that we were trying this year, which is, for the first six articles, I meant to say this before, we put the first six articles in a consent agenda. Every year, those, well, at least the first five, anyway, number six is just a very housekeeping measure, it just says that we're just changing to say, taking out the word representatives, which we don't have anymore in the capital outlay committee. But the first five pass every year unanimously, and so for efficiency, we were going to put those all into one vote. If, if there's any objections, we could separate them out, but basically, nobody ever, you know, does not want us to get grant money, nobody ever does not want us to take $300,000 of free money from the state to pave roads, that sort of thing. So, so we put one through six, will be moved as one question and voted on. But there again, if somebody has a strong feeling about one, you could move to divide that out separately. But again, it was more of an efficiency thing to get those six done, which was accepting the town reports, fixing salaries of elected officials as required by law, proceeds from the cemetery lots, which we, which we are required under that, forgetting the word. If Donna's here, she could say what it is, there's some rule, we have to transfer those, so.
It's a trust account?
Trust account, thanks, yeah. Part of the, the rules of that trust, so. Blanket grant authorization and accepting Chapter 90 money are all on there. And the one-time change we need to make is just a general bylaw amendment that was, again, kind of left off the last time. We made changes for open town meeting, and we left in the representatives on the capital outlay committee, so. Any other general questions, Ann?
Yeah, this presentation that you put together was just so informative, is this something that is already on our town website?
It is not, but I was planning to put it on there, so, tomorrow. And this is recorded too, so people can watch it on CTSB, but I'll make sure this, this will be up on a PDF tomorrow, so. And for those of you who haven't seen it already, I'm assuming most of you have, but right on the main page, under news, there's a section for town meeting, and it's got the summary, the warrant on there, a bunch of other information right on the main page, and this will get added to that also. Other questions? Yeah?
One question, two totally different questions. One is that if you put money towards, like the dump truck that you're saying, and it's not used, then does the money go into the general fund?
Right, and then becomes free cash for the next fiscal year. So this year, all of our capital items and our non-departmental items are being used from, from free cash, we're using about 50% of that, so none of that hits the tax rate. Only the operating budget, but, you know.
And the second part of that was, there was a, there's a handbook that is, I always use to look at all of this, I think a lot of this is still, right?
The handbook is, I'm not sure if it's still up there anymore, because it was a representative handbook, but if it's not, I can, I don't want to confuse anyone with it, but it's definitely, we definitely have it available still, we haven't thrown it out or anything, so, but I could add it if you want, so, with a little caveat.
I know there's, it's, it's, we're probably mortal come, the baby town meeting, yeah, I guess you could put it up on there.
And we're going to put this up here, too. Yeah, there's also two videos on, it's linked on the website as well, from the moderators' association that talks about open town meeting, they're, so you, those are hyperlinked on there as well, so you could check those out if you want, they give a little more information about it, so. DeeDee? Yeah?
I'm asking about knowledge, and if all, were all of the registered voters of the towns late a price of this meeting?
So anybody who subscribes to our e-blast would have gotten it, we were in the paper, and we've had it on our emergency alerts at the top as well, so.
Okay, um, if you wanted to know-
And we did put it in all the tax bills as well, that, there was information about it, so.
Oh, all right.
Yeah, and where you could subscribe, so.
No, I did not get a notice, but I'll figure out a way to sign up for something so that I can get it.
Yeah, if you go on, right at the top of the website, there's a subscribe button, and if you click on that, you can put your email in and, yeah.
Thanks a lot.
Yeah, anyone else? All right, well, it looks like we have about 10 or 15 minutes before we'll start the next phase of the, of tonight. So if anybody, I was, I do want to mention, I see my clerk looking over here, if you, if you needed to register to vote, I think she brought things tonight. But otherwise, thank you all for coming to this portion, we'll reconvene in about 10:15 minutes for Part Two. Thank you.
Welcome, everyone, thanks for coming. This is the Lee Baby Town Meeting, and I think we're just gonna, we're just gonna go ahead and get started. It's really going to just be informal, we're just going to run down the, the town warrant for, for the meeting and take any questions as we go. So I'll just, I'll just get started, really the first six articles here. Did you review this before at all?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the first six articles, if, if everyone's in agreement, we, a town meeting, we may just take one vote for them, but we'll just go through them one by one. The first article, we have the town reports, and this is to receive the reports of the selectmen, town accountant, and other officers, board, commissions, and committees of the town. This article's on every year, if anybody's got any questions for that. I don't see any, so I'm just going to keep going through these first six pretty quickly.
I was just going to mention, Sean, that it's online now to a PDF, and we'll have printed versions available for the meeting, but you can see the PDF on the website.
Right, so if you don't-
I'm calling it the collector's edition, it's really nice, full color this year.
Yeah. Yes. So that's just to receive town reports. Number two is salary of elected officials, and this is really just to see if the town will vote to fix salaries of all elected officials as required by law, fiscal year ending July 1st, 2023, or to take any other action. So if, if somebody were to make a motion to take another action, we would, but really, this article would just fix the same salary for elected officials that we, that we currently have. Any questions about that? Article three, the transfer of proceeds for the sale of cemetery lots to perpetual care account, and this, you know, you'll see, at times, the finance committee recommends approval. And this is to see if the town will vote to authorize the transfer of some of $2,200 or any other amount for the sale of cemetery lots, receipts for, to the Fairmont Perpetual Care Trust account, or to take any other actions relative thereto. Anything on? So feel free, at any point, if anybody, raise your hand. Article four, blanket grant authorization. This is to see if the town will vote to authorize the select board or other town departments with the knowledge of the select board to apply for and access grants from the town government, Commonwealth of Massachusetts, or any other source to execute any documents in connection with said applications, and to expend grant funds or, for purposes received without further appropriation, or to take any other action relative thereto. So that's really just to give the select board blanket authorization for grants, if anybody has any questions about that. Article five, road pair, road repair and paving. These are Chapter 90 funds, to see if the town will vote to expand those sums for the fiscal year of '23. Chapter 90 funds is provided by the Commonwealth. So Chapter 90 funds get spent on paving. Yes? Come on down to the mic and let everyone know who you are, because the, the camp, for the cameras, the people can't hear you on the video if we don't talk on-
Yeah, Cardle, you know, Fairview Street, quick question, I just wondered what the amount was this year.
Yeah, we're estimated at $285,553.
Thank you.
That will be combined with a couple other sources of funding to do a total of $829,000 in paving.
So Article six, the last in the consent agenda, this is a general bylaw amendment, to see if the town will amend Article II, Section 7.3, capital outlay committee appointment member by striking one town meeting member for each of the representative districts and inserting six members at large, and adding members shall be appointed for three-year overlapping terms. Three members shall be appointed annually or to take any other action relative thereto. So this is part of going to open town meeting, we're making some, some bylaw changes to just, to fall in, in line with that. So those first six articles are part of what the consent agenda is, so we, we may just pass those all with one vote at town meeting unless there's an objection. I see somebody coming down to the mic, so.
Ryan Brown, Robert Street. With the Article six, will that be able to be included in this, seeing it's a bylaw change, and won't that require a two-thirds vote?
Just a general bylaw, but not a zoning, so, but, even less council thinks other, I think we're okay for the general bylaw.
It'll be a majority vote, you know.
Majority vote for the Article six. All right, moving on. Article seven, the omnibus fiscal year, general fund operating budget, finance committee recommends. And this is just to see if the town will raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds, any sums, there's sums of money for the maintenance in several departments of the town, and for any other necessary change, to pass the vote. So can we, do we want to run down these line by line, do you think, and go over the increases? Bob Gordon, you guys?
What is the, what is the meeting thing?
Yeah. Does anybody have any specific questions about any increases? Because you all have this in front of you. Chris, maybe real quick, you could give us the, the percentage increase that our, that our operating budget?
Yeah, so the operating budget is a .3% increase.
Sorry, I just had a question about Article six, and I'm stuck-
Sure, we, no, we can go back, it's no problem.
Because this is something new and different of the six articles, the other ones are pretty much standard. But the Article six, so before, it was represented by the districts, and now we don't have the districts anymore, so they will be appointed by, I assume, the select board members? Who will do the appointments?
Right, yeah, so they were, they were always appointed by select board members, but it was always one from each district.
Right.
So this just makes it six at-large spots, that's the only change to it. And we would, those that are already in, you know, would finish out their terms-
Right.
And then they could, they could apply to continue or, or not, and then, but either way, it's just six at-large, it doesn't represent any geographical boundaries anymore.
Exactly, okay. All right, I just want a clarification on that, thank you.
So, yeah, just generally, .3 increase on the budget, back to that. If anybody has any specific questions on any increases, we have department heads here available to take questions as well, if there's anything specific, so. I'll kind of, I'll give this a couple minutes, and we can look through this. Everyone, take your time. We're on Article seven. Yeah, and if you, it's really, I mean, we could go through this line by line, but if you have any specific questions about increases, we would field them at this time, operating budget.
I mean, if we want to do it by categories of, any questions on general government, we can do it that way.
It's 114 through 197.
Come, come to the mic if you would, sorry, I know it's-
Galsarisia, and I just wanted to know, are we bringing this much money in? Are we collecting this money for, you know, the sewer and water tax, or is this, where's this money coming from?
Sewer and water would be on a separate enterprise account, those are on a different article, and those are just based on user fees. But this budget, the operating budget for $21,300,000 and change, that money is, we set the tax rate based on that, so we, we, we vote on it, and then we collect the money and tax it on it.
Okay, all right, I was just curious, so there's two different bills, then?
Wait, so, yeah, there's-
Yeah, we'll get to the water and sewer enterprises coming up next, this is like, yeah, operating budget for the department, so, I, we can kind of go through the, the different categories.
I was just trying to figure out the source.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. Everything on the operating budget is raise and appropriate through taxes, most everything else is either an enterprise fund or free cash, so.
Okay, I was just wondering if this state was just being, or something?
Not, yeah.
Other, and-
Oh, sorry, yes.
Can I go back to Article six, not to the labor points?
Absolutely.
But, okay. My name's Jim Harding, I live on Orchard Street. What this says now is, members shall be appointed for three-year overlapping terms, three- What this says now is, members shall be appointed for three-year overlapping terms, three, and for three-year terms, right?
Right.
That's six members at large. The three people are gonna be appointed annually. That seems to be nine people.
Right, so maybe, do we have that mixed up so that it's?
Yeah, the rest of.
It should be two yearly for six members, is what you're, you're saying, for a six-member board, yeah.
There should be two appointed annually, if you're gonna do three-year overlapping terms, if I'm understanding.
I think, yeah, it says, "Members shall be appointed for three years," so I don't think.
Yeah, so what's not in this part, because this is just showing the amendment, the actual bylaw also includes a member of the Finance Committee. There can be a member of the Planning Board on it, and one of, so there is nine altogether.
Got it.
Yeah, thanks.
Right. Cornelia?
I have a question about animal control, not about the amounts, but it used to be that it was across, you know, shared in town, different towns. Is that not the case anymore?
The animal control officer is, is shared. That particular budget is, that's mostly for the, the building that they use. So there's a kennel, and I think Jim is back here. He can speak to that. I believe that is mostly to replace some of the, I think, the heating system in it, but.
So maybe it should be stated as such?
There is a stipend as well for, for the each town phase, but Jim, come on up if you want.
No, I mean, here, under 292.
Yep.
Yep.
So it's not for the personnel? Okay.
I'm gonna let Jim handle that one.
Good question. So the, the budget request is, that's the Lee's portion. So the operating budget's actually $28,050, 50% Lee, 50% Lennox. There is an increase because we have to purchase a boiler for the kennel, and so Lee's on the hook for half of that, and then Lennox on the other half. So this is just the Lee portion.
Perfect. Thanks, Jim.
Yeah, maybe, maybe I'll just, I'll just read through, well, everybody's getting the, going through this on your own. I'll just read through the total department changes. In the total general government, we, last year, we had a budget of $1,62,265. This year, it's $1,130,480. The total for public safety, $2,506,411. And last year and this year, the budget increased to[775.72][775.75]$2,630,030. Education, you have an increase from $10,164,902 to $10,000, $10,647,478. Total in the Public Works category, $1,321,199 last year, and this year, we're up to[803.62][803.65]$1,508,459.
Just gonna mention something.
Go ahead.
The, the, the large increase in that is also that we're doing $200,000 of road paving from the operating budget. So we split up a total of $829,000 in paving between several sources. But because we had paid off some debt this year, rather than taking out another loan right now for any paving, we, we were able to use a portion of free cash, a portion of raise and appropriate, some Chapter 90, all of our Chapter 90 money and some 40R money to total our paving. So we'll have just over $800,000 in paving without taking out any other loans or anything like that. So that's why that increased there.
Yeah, and continuing, total Health and Human Services, $356,664 last year, increased to[869.22][869.25]$372,620 this year. Sure, come on up.
Is doing great work right now in terms of our fight of, of having, anyway. I was wondering what the big increases are. I'm just interested.
Yeah, and Jim can come down, and it's actually related to what you're, what you were just mentioning, so.
Then I can leave it.
Yeah. Yeah. Cornelia, do you mind?
Is it the border health line item you're asking about?
Yeah, yeah.
So the border health line item is traditionally 765, the cover for public notices, trainings, so on and so forth. And the Lee Border Call through the chair who is here asked for an increase to assist us, if needed, for additional postings, technical assistance with respect to additional possible actions we may be looking into. Asking for assistance on looking at plans. We're waiting for a conceptual design supposedly by GE. We don't possess certain skill sets for that, so it's a nominal increase, what potentially we could really use. So it's just the beginning for, to ask for that increase.
The recreational budget went up from $364,081 last year to $387,727 this year. We have a total debt services came down a long ways from $865,850 to $3,100. Our intergovernmental Berkshire Regional Planning increased about $120, looks like. That's benefits, insurances, yeah. So, and then we're down to employee benefits. We increased from $4,495,128 to $4,515,606. And then just a subtotal for the insurances, $178,659, increased to $188,760. So that brings us down to our, our total fixed costs and the total budget here. Budget increased from $21,319,70 to $21,389,199 for an increase of, you said, .3%, Chris?
Hi, Karen Molino, Via Bondi. I just want to ask, you're talking about the, the benefits and everything. The, the life insurance, you said 12%. It just seems extremely high jump in insurance.
Which, are you talking about a specific line item, or just the, the insurances and?
Right here.
Life insurance, from $16,000 to $18,000?
You said the town's life insurance and Medicare costs had increase of 12 and 4% respectfully. So that's saying that life insurance was 12% higher?
Yep. That, the difference between the $16,000 to $18, yeah. That was just premium costs. We were very lucky, though, if you look at our health insurance, which is the big one, was actually level funded, which was great. That was $3 million. So we had a really good rate on that, but we did have a couple thousand-dollar increase in the life insurance. That's just premiums that the company charged. I don't know if you have any more to add on that, Donna?
So we haven't had an increase probably in about 10 years, eight or 10 years, on our life insurance. So we were kind of due to have something. It probably won't go up again for many years, but that's, that's why we had the large increase.
Great. Any other questions on the operating budget? Not seeing any. Do you guys, Bob, why don't you, why don't you take, take the next one? You gotta.
Sorry, I have one, I do.
Okay, one question quick.
Okay, Monica Ryan, Laurel Street. Now, within, the office hours in Town Hall for most of the offices have changed. And I'm wondering, are the employees still working their full 40 hours? Maybe some of them are at home? Or how is it working now? Or did they have a reduction in the number of hours that they work now for the town?
Yeah, number of hours were exactly the same. We just distribute it different to be open later on Tuesdays and Thursdays.
Okay.
Yeah. But they're all working the same number of hours, and we don't have anyone working from home unless it's a snow emergency or something like that.
All right. Okay, good. Thanks.
Check one, too. There we go. I play in a band, you can tell. Omnibus Fiscal Year 2024, the General Fund Capital Budgets. Capitol Outlay Committee and Finance Committee recommends approval for $459,500. And of course, the capital improvements are, you can see the list in front of you that include properties, real property, including trucks and, and real estate. Any questions from the?
I have a question. You know, there's been a lot of, there are articles about the proposed police fire, shared public building. So that's not in here. But then we might be spending all this money now instead of putting it towards that?
The only one I think on there that would, might be affected by that is the Iraldi Building roof, but it's leaking pretty severely in the entrance, but. Oh, and there is, the fire ambulance capital, that's not for the building, that's for the ambulance.
Thank you.
I'm just looking to see if there's any others, but I think, yeah, I think other than the Iraldi Building, that it's, it's just a, repairs to the ambulance, so.
But that proposal is not in this budget this year?
It's not in this warrant. Will likely be a special town meeting. We're still, we're still in design phase, so.
Thank you.
And take one, Gordon?
Anne Langless, Union Street. The school network replacement, if someone could explain to me what it was before, what it's going to now, and why it's a possibility. Thank you.
Yeah, it's Mike, he's here.
Good evening, and thank you for the question. Our school network is our technology infrastructure that controls everything that we do. It is our backbone and our lifeline for delivering quality instruction to our students each and every day. It has exceeded its life expectancy. In fact, the last consultant that we had come in was very surprised that it was still intact. So it is a bit of an emergent situation. If it were to fail, our schools would be, for lack of a better term, crippled. So the, the idea is for using some of this money combined with E-Rate money and potentially school choice monies to satisfy the total obligation, which is nearly $300,000.
Articles of due, Article nine and 10 together. We've got the Water Enterprise, that's our, our drinking water, and the Wastewater Enterprise Fund. You can see that those are both level funded. They're paid by the users. Any comments? Any questions? Okay, Article 11, Omnibus Fiscal Year 2024, General Fund Operating Budgets. And again, the Finance Committee and Capitol Outlay recommends approval, total $508,294. And these are, include a wide range from paving EMS all the way down to fireworks for Founder's Day. These are sort of the superfluous items in the budget. Any questions from the floor? Yep?
Well, one thing I'd like to see on this would be town-wide Wi-Fi.
Town-wide Wi-Fi.
Yeah.
We have, we, we have a article coming up later that could address that, so.
Article 12, the Meadow Street.
Hang on, Bob.
Okay, go ahead. Sorry.
Sorry. Just a quick question. What does Greenagers Longco Park mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, so last year, we, we were able to have Greenagers come in to the Pinnacle Trail on Golden Hill. That was done out of an ARPA appropriation. But they did a great job. We're hoping to have them come back this year to do Longco Park, which is in need of quite a bit of work. They're gonna look to try to improve some of the areas that cross, hopefully, maybe reroute, reroute some areas and, and fix some of the areas that go through some of the wetter portions of the trails, so. But they are a nonprofit group that has teenagers in the summer, and they go out and do outdoor projects like this, so. Yeah, so that's, they estimated about $5,000 for their crew to come out, replace some of the bridges, fix the trails, that sort of thing. So the same thing they did at Golden Hill last year.
Anybody else? All right, moving on, Article 12, the Meadow Street Bridge land acquisition. My understanding is that the state is going to be paying for the repair of the bridge itself, but in order to, to do that repair, to get, it's gonna be full funded, but in order to do that repair, we have to do a, a small land acquisition. And it, I don't have any figures attached to that, but we're looking for approval from the town meeting, in fact, to negotiate that land acquisition.
I can hear you. Can you hear me, Cornelia?
Yeah, we estimate that that would be the maximum amount. It's kind of a tricky thing. Until we actually do this, then we have to have it the, assessed, and there's certain procedures that Mast dot goes through for that. But essentially, their best estimates that they've given us right now is it should be, should be hopefully less than that, but a maximum of 75. But for that $75,000 investment, we're getting a bridge that is gonna cost $5 or $6 million, I think. Lenny, is that right? About a $5 or $6 million bridge. And this is, this is the one on the other side of Oak and Spruce. It's a temporary bridge right now. It's been a temporary bridge for about 10 years. But it's a one-lane temporary, so it's on the tip program. They're replacing it all. We're just on the hook to acquire a permanent easement for that, so.
Jack Cody, 51st Street. Is that land owned by Oak and Spruce?
Correct, yeah. It's, it's, there's a temporary.
They're not gonna donate it to the town?
They could. We'll be happy to take it as a donation, yeah. It's a very small parcel that we're, you know, so.
And my last question about that. My name is Suzie Harding. I live on Orchard Street. On the article itself, there, there's no dollar amount on the vote. When we vote on it, do we vote up to $75,000? Or do we give you the reins and hope for the best?
Yeah. So, I mean, you could put a do-not-exceed amount on it. It just gets a little tricky on these because I know it seems like we're putting the cart before the horse on them, but until we do the authorization, and feel free to jump in, Jeremiah, on this, until we do the authorization, then we can't get the appraisals and that sort of thing done to see what the fair market value of that easement would be to offer them and so forth. So, I mean, we could add that on there. It's not there now. We're just, you know, putting your faith in the board that they'll, they'll get it as cheap as possible, but.
Yeah, so the first thing we're gonna do is ask that it be donated. We always ask that. It's especially a property like Oak and Spruce, it's gonna help them, so the thinking is they'll, they're, they're probably gonna be, most of them will be temporary easements. Only a few of them will be permanent easements. And then how much those are worth, we have to get an appraisal. We don't know. If someone is gonna say, "No, we won't donate it," we have to figure out what it's worth, because we just don't know. So we'd be just making a number up right now if we did that.
So the, the thinking is, we have to have the bridge, and we know roughly what it's gonna cost. But if we put a number on and it's too low, then you're stuck and can't proceed for another year till we vote on a new number.
Right.
Is that the logic?
Correct.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
Any other questions on Article 12? If not, we'll move on to Article 13, CPA Appropriation 2023. The town will vote to act on a report of the Community Preservation Committee. And what this does is you look down to the estimated budgeting revenues. There is a certain amount that's added to all our tax, all our tax bills. And they take that amount of money and put it in a specific fund for the Community Preservation Committee. And by law, they have to take a certain part of the reserves and put them in design, three designated fund areas. One is for possible use in open space recreation. One is for historic resources, and one is for community housing. This year, we'll, we'll be asking to put those portions that are written here, it's like sixteen thousand, three hundred and eight dollars basically, and, and put it aside in there for future use. This is not for expending this year. It's for putting aside and earmarking a portion of what we get. We still will have, and I don't want to call it a slush fund, but there'll still be a major amount of money that is not specifically designated. And we're hoping by next year that we may get some, they may have some, the Community Preservation Committee may have some hearings and look into possibly bringing to you folks some actual projects where they want to utilize not just like open space and recreation amount that's in there, but additional funds out of the general area that they put money also. So, did I explain that?
Yeah, I think just to add to that a little bit, Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, but this money's already been raised, right?
Right, yeah. So we, we have the surcharge, and then we get a portion of the state trust fund. So legally, we have to, at the very least, divide up into ten percent of it into those three categories, and it's, it's unusual. This year, we're actually doing two years, because we didn't have a CPC committee on our first year doing it. So we're, we have to play catch up this year and do twenty-three and twenty-four. But the, the committee has form. They've been meeting monthly. They're getting an application together, they, and a CPC plan. So hopefully next year, there'll be applications available where people can put in, for funding, and then a, the article next year will include some projects. So this gives the fund a chance to get some, some, you know, build up some revenue. There should be at least six hundred thousand by the time applications go out, so.
Yeah, and anybody can apply for these funds. Anybody can apply for a project as long as it meets the certain criteria for the CPA committee to approve. So if you have a project in mind, you know, feel free to apply next year.
So Article fourteen is basically the same with the funds of money are a little bit more because we have more money in the accounts. But it's for fiscal year 2024. So as, as was described a minute ago, the, the Article thirteen is about playing catch up, and then Article fourteen is about what we want to do this next coming year. And the amounts of money for those three areas is basically nineteen thousand, three hundred and five dollars into each of those specialized funds. Okay, any questions about those? Same thing as what we just described. Seeing none, Article fifteen, maybe getting Monica a little closer to what you were talking about, as part of this overall LED street light issue. Where we're authorizing in this, as you know, it does take a two-thirds vote, because it's, and it is recommended by both the finance committee and the capital outlay committees. Is to see if, basically, we'll enter into a lease purchase financing agreement for the acquisition. Basically, we'll be taking over our streetlights, and now we don't own them, and we'll be taking over those. And there'll be smart lighting where we'll have controls where we can dim the lights. We can, it'll tell us if any of the lights are out so that we can act on that. But there'll be a transitional period where we have to hire somebody to come in and take the old streetlights down and put up the new streetlights. So we can, as part of that agreement, there may be some options in that to, and this does not take, this is not applicable to the Main Street lights that are specialty, you know, the post lights that are down Main Street. And also the post lights that are OPLI, the Corey Hill Park. Those are kind of specialty units, but these are for, this article is about taking over control of all the other basic lights, streetlights in town. So that we have more control over them. We can save money just on LED, running LED alone, and then being able to dim them down if we need. And through that process, there are additional things we can look at, such as running Wi-Fi through those street poles. So that, that would be not this year, but that would be something we'd entertain as we go forward with this.
Thank you, Monica Ryan. So that would be great. I would recommend that because the cost of Wi-Fi is just ridiculous. I mean, I don't use cable because that's too high, and so I just pay for my internet bill, and it's, for one person, it's kind of ridiculous. So it would be a huge savings for the townspeople if we could go with the, you know, I, I know it may not go, because there are some streets may not have lights. So now my only question is, I'm on Route twenty. The road is maintained by the state, by the state police barracks?
Yeah.
So those street lamps, so, because they're not the, you know, the special ones on Main Street, you're talking about those street lights as well?
I believe they're, I believe that they're something that we pay for.
Okay.
Yeah, right now, there's four hundred and one, what they call Cobra head fixtures, which are the ones on the poles. That would replace all of those. I believe they're all fluorescent, those fluorescent lighting. You see the orange.
Okay.
High pressure sodium. Oh, yes.
Okay, good.
It should, it should take account of most all the streets, if they have streetlights, which would be by you.
Got it.
The, the savings would more than pay for the loan, so we end up cash flow positive right from the start on that. But they have, they have what they call like, I think, believe it's like a nine-pin connector on all of them that gives you that smart capability where you could add Wi-Fi. You could add cameras. You could add any kind of like noise detectors or weather equipment, not that you have to add any of these, but it has that capability because they're all connected on a, on a common circuit.
Hi, Gail Ceresio, Park Street, West Park Street. I just, I think it's a great idea. I just was wondering about the lighting. Is it going to be similar to what we have now? I mean, some lighting is really offensive, and I just want, I was wondering if you looked at how this will be on the streets and.
Yeah, I, I think it's, if you're, yeah, if you're interested, I would drive over to, I believe Lennox and Pittsfield have, have like these, this LED, new, new LED light, so at night, you know, you can go and check those out. It would be a similar.
Similar lighting. Thank you. Right.
Yeah, it's a little, it's a little more of a whiter light than the oranges color that is there now, so.
Hi, Caramelino via Bondi. I was just, I think this is great. Can we, is there anything we can add? Like sometimes you see on the lights or in the stop signs, the solar panel, like to add to it, or, I don't know.
It's a good question. We can ask them, but I'm not, I have not heard that one come up yet, so, yeah, not sure.
Cornelia Kalascher, Bear Town Road. Are there going to be downcast lights? Downcast.
Yeah, pretty much like we have now.
Yeah.
Sort of a gooseneck with shielded bulb that'll be aiming.
Because I know like by my house, I, I had, I asked them to turn it away, so it's coming right into my house and keeping me up at night.
Yeah, and that's part of the smart capabilities is you can ask our DPW to dim that after a certain time.
Yeah.
Or just.
Just the one.
Just the one light.
Just the one light. It's like a no-brainer.
And, and part of the smart system, it'll identify when the lights go out, so we'll know when, which ones need to be replaced right away.
I meant like the direction of the actual lamp.
Right. Well, I don't know about the direction.
Well, I think as long as it's a downlight, I happen to be offended by a lot of lighting out there, as the planning board members will tell you. I, I just, I hate all the lighting that we have, this bold brash, where you drive down the road and you see the light bulb. It's like, give me a break, get a shield, you know? I mean, light up the area you want, but don't lay up my face when I'm driving. So I'm going to be watching this. And the other thing also is I think it's about time we take another look around town. Are there some that we just don't need? And why are we paying for them if we don't need them? So it's time to maybe do an audit.
And could we, the public be involved in part of that?
Of course.
That'd be great. Also, on the highway, as you're coming into Lee from Boston or wherever, all the lights there, do we own those?
Those are state-owned. That's DOT, Mass DOT?
It's unbelievably.
It, it looks like an airport runway, right? Yeah.
So we, are we paying for that electricity?
No.
Okay.
It could be. We could reach out to them and see if they want to, like, think about the same thing, you know, because there are a lot of lights there.
That'd be great.
They have their own rules about lighting.
One other, just clarification, the, as we said, these are just the, what they call Cobra headlights. But we are looking at some refurbishing of the downtown lights, and that is not part of this, because we're actually seeking a grant that would refurbish those lights, add some, repainting them, fixing those up, also adding the smart capabilities. But we're hoping that will be funded by a DHCD grant, so fingers crossed on that.
Jack Cody, Fifty First Street. What's the cost involved in this?
We're, we're, we're saving money. I think, was it like two hundred?
It's negative.
Yeah.
So my main, my main question was getting to, or will we qualify for any energy saving credits by going from regular lighting to LED? I mean.
Well, so right now, let me just, to answer the first part of the question, that. We, what we end up with, this is to authorize a, a financing for them. So we end up with, keeping our current budget for the lights at sixty-eight thousand, and then the lease would be forty-seven, and then the, when you add in the energy savings, it drops the energy from a total of sixty-eight thousand dollars down to the forty-seven thousand dollars lease plus nine thousand in energy. We end up eleven thousand ahead of the game, so.
In the first year.
In the first year. Once it's paid for, then we're way ahead.
I mean, LED is the way to go. Like, the second part of my question, are we eligible for any?
Yeah, since we might be, if we, depending on whether we become a green community or not, that's where most of that money comes from.
From, okay.
With stretch code, yeah, which we're, we're getting to next, well, coming up.
Hi, Dietrich Kunsladi. Referring to the history of the downtown lights. I live in the downtown. I've watched this now for forty years. The lighting that we have now was recommended by Charlotte Davis, and it's the colonial style. And so if this has anything to do with change of design of that, it might be better to go to Victorian, because this is the period in which the downtown was, you know, built up and like that. So just a point of history.
Thank you.
Yeah, if we do get that grant, let, you know, there's, there's about, there's about ten different fixtures you can pick from, so maybe more, but to change the top of it, so.
I totally agree. After what they did in Great Barrington, they really made a mess down there, so they put in a lot of modern, and it just, it just, it really looks bad. So I agree with DeeDee. Keep with the period.
Any other questions before I move on? No. Seeing none, I'll go to Article sixteen. This is one we usually do. It's to basically put aside one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars into a special account for fire EMS apparatus replacement special stabilization fund. It's one we've done for a long time. Like, you can't come in and, and just, and, and take nine hundred thousand one year to buy a fire truck, if you can even get one for that, you know? But we, we put money aside each year to build up until it's time to buy something like that, and that's basically what this is doing. It's setting aside money, earmarking it for the future expenditure. Any questions on that? Do you want to go back to, why don't you take it over, John, to Article seventeen?
Hang on, we got one.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Pat Carley, I do not have a question. What I would ask is, could you all speak into your microphones? Including the people who come up here?
Yeah.
Because if you're in the back of the person, you can't hear what they're saying. And now, Gordon, I couldn't hear a word you said.
I'm sorry. I didn't pull it in enough.
I was reading with you.
Yeah, okay. It's close now, Patty. I'll, I'll raise my voice. I hate to shout, that's all. Okay, will do.
So, yeah, moving on, Article seventeen, Water Sewer Infrastructure Fund appropriation. Finance committee and capital outlay recommend to see if the town will appropriate four hundred and forty-five thousand, eight hundred dollars from the Water Sewer Infrastructure Surcharge Account for the purposes of waterline replacement on Railroad and Robert Street, or to take any other action relative there, too. And my understanding, those, those streets are in pretty dire need of a waterline improvement. Continuing, Article eighteen, the school truck telp authorization. This is a two-thirds vote. The finance committee and outlay committee recommend approval, and this is to see if the town will authorize General Laws, Chapter forty-four, Section twenty-one C. Upon recommendation of the select board, a lease purchase finance agreement, the acquisition of the school plow truck equipment that may be acquired through the insurance of debt. Were you going to say something?
Oh, I was just going to imagine, this is only authorizing the borrowing. If you approve the school budget, the money to pay for it is already in that operating budget. So this is just authorizing them to take out basically a loan for the truck. If we didn't have the network replacement, we probably would have done it under capital, but it would have been a big ask to add another hundred thousand on top of the hundred and fifty already. So the idea was to, just like anyone could get a car loan, they've increased, it's, it's built into the budget to pay a yearly payment on that truck, so.
Anne Langless, Union Street. Do they always have their own plow truck?
Go ahead and just set that, set that back up, Anne. Take a, take a second. There you go. Point it, probably. Point it right up at you. There you go.
Do they always have their own snowplow?
Yes, yes.
And there's just something wrong with the old one? Can't be repaired, or does anybody know?
Yeah, I know if Mike or Zach are both here, if you can explain the details, but it's pretty much, yeah.
And is there an amount that is labeled to the cost of the plow truck?
So we do maintain our own vehicles. The vehicle that we're seeking to replace failed us midwinter. I appreciate the DPW stepping up and lending us a vehicle to help us get through the maintenance phase while we still had weather coming in. We do have a specified amount of money that we've taken from school choice funds and applied it to maintenance of district vehicles for the coming fiscal year, with the expectation we would continue to do that for the duration of the loan.
Okay, moving on, Article nineteen. This is article for potentially the purchase of the Laurel Lake Dam. And really, as you can see there, it's be approximately one point one three acres. I think everybody, if you don't know where that's located, it's, it's, it's the dam that you would cross over to get to the beach, so. The owner has approached the town to sell it. I believe it's a dollar, right?
Yeah, basically a donation.
Basically a donation to the town if we would like to purchase it. This is potentially, this would be in the Lennox's article warrant as well, because we're, we're looking to purchase it contingent.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, it's not, actually, it's not in their warrant. It would be the town of lease, but we're hoping to, the plan is to, and I've spoken to them, because they do share part of that shoreline that we would probably do in a intermunicipal agreement, that they would cover half of the costs of maintaining and inspecting it.
And it was about ten thousand a ye, a year is what we were thinking?
Correct, yeah. So there's no additional insurance for liability insurance of the dam itself, as far as like if somebody got hurt on the dam, we're already insuring that, so that doesn't, there is no downstream coverage now, nor would there be afterwards. That's, so there would be no change to downstream coverage, so.
The dam did pass the last inspection, so. Yeah, please, yeah.
I, I guess I just want to understand fully the, the risk and the liability involved with owning this dam that we're taking on. I really want to make sure that we seriously evaluate what that, what that is or could be, because a dam. be because a dam can always have issues. So, I mean, what you tell me, there's no downstream protection now? If that dam broke and it damaged stuff downstream, where would we be at if it was ours?
So we would not have downstream coverage either? That's not available for that dam? So the, the, anyone that's in that would have separate flood insurance for that, but there is, we'd have no downstream coverage on our other dams either for that matter, but...
Okay. I just want to make sure that we're fully aware of all the liability aspects of it, that's all.
We would definitely need to, it's a biannual inspection, so the last one was done in 2022. So we would be doing one in, would actually fall into FY25. So if we did approve this, there would be no budget this year, but the next, a year from now, we would, we would be looking to have a roughly estimated $10,000 budget, which would cover the inspection and then any, you know, money for any minor repairs that need to be done.
That inspection and the frequency is mandated by the state, I take it?
Correct, yeah, every other year. It's an inspection that's mandated by the state. This comes with, I guess the bigger part of it is the top, whoever owns the dam, which is now privately owned, has control of the top 12 and a half feet of water as well as the pipe that goes back into, it ends at Eagle Mill, there's deeded access to that pipe if the town were to ever want to use that for hydroelectric power, so.
Doesn't that pipe continue on to the Eagle Mill property?
Yeah, exactly.
Is there any issue there with Eagle Mill and the town?
So they, they, by, they're, the deed for the dam includes a right of access at the Eagle Mill. They have to provide an access to that pipe, so.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Hi, so my thought on, on the dam was that the towns of Lee and Lennox have always shared, you know, the lake and gotten along very well together. And it's been proposed in the past, and I'd love to think this would be a, a future idea is that, that our beaches merge to the point where we could go to the Lennox Beach, Lennox residents could come to our beach. It would be a friendly agreement and I think the, the dam idea is a good thing to have ownership of so that we can kind of cast that in stone. But in the future, I'd love to see the idea of have both beaches being shared by the residents of the towns. Thank you.
Hi. Hi, thank you, Lisa Sloan, Orchard Street. So I was just trying to get a better handle on partial, what partial access means and, and what the benefit to the town is. So if it means that it gets us all the way to the Hyland Farm property, and if it doesn't, then I'm not sure what the benefit to the town is.
It, it doesn't, it doesn't allow somebody else to purchase the dam and make it even harder for us to get to the beach.
Okay.
So that's part of it, right? We, we still would have to, we still don't have direct access onto Hyland Farms property, so we would still need to work with the other property owner in that, across the dam, yeah.
Well, no.
The other, sure.
But it's the same people that are donating it. So has there been discussions about, I believe, no? The donation and the next piece of access are the same family or related?
Well, yeah.
So, yeah, just wondering about, so it feels like we're taking, I hear what you're saying, that's great. But can we leverage some additional discussion? Have we tried?
We did try, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Hi, Peter Blum, Orchard Street. I guess I had the same question. When I go to the beach, I often ground out my car on that little tank trap that the owner builds at the far end of his property. And it seems to me that we have very limited ability to enjoy access to our beach because of his practice. Now, what I understand also is that this proposal is that we would take on responsibility for the costs of inspecting, providing a required inspection, which I think helps him out, doesn't it? Helps that landowner out to the tune of about $10,000 every other year? So I would hope that we could improve our access and have a smoother traveling path into the beach before I would vote for this.
Dave Flores, Graylock Street. My issues are the same. $10,000 is $10,000. We have plenty to spend our money on without buying a dam. There's only one person that's going to benefit from this. Until the time comes that we can make negotiate some kind of an agreement to get access to the Hyland property, I don't think this is a good deal. I, I would like to see, we've been waiting a long time for this to happen, this negotiation to take place. If this is part of it, okay. The 12 and a half feet, I think the state will tell us what we can draw off of the lake. Yes, we have control to the old dam or the new dam, but the state's going to tell us how much water we can draw off of that thing and when. So I really think, I, I think at town meeting, we're going to have a lengthy discussion, so we'll cross that bridge then. Thank you.
Hi, Gail Ceresia, West Park Street. I just wanted to, one of the things I was just thinking about was this will be our road going over the, okay. So wintertime, what happens with the plowing? Are we going to be responsible to plow and how do we?
Good question.
How do we manage that plowing? Because I don't know how you can cross and then just, I'm looking at this map, how you can stop and, and turn around. It just seems like it might be a little bit of a problem. I don't, I don't, you know? That's one of the things I'm really thinking about. And I, and I think that the shears can give us an easement. If we're going to take on, I think David's point is, is valid, that if we are going to take on this dam and the expense and the liability and whatnot, that perhaps they should give us an easement across the piece of land that we always did have an easement before they decided they wanted the land. And I think that, you know, both of us could benefit from that. And how do you, the plowing, yeah. You know, just the maintenance of it, that's, that's got me wondering. Thank you.
Yeah, so the owner, the homeowner that is on the other side of the dam also, along with their deed, has deeded access through the dam to get to their house. So they're, you know, would be doing some of that as well if there was plowing in the winter. We don't plow it now, the homeowner does, so.
But we might wind up having to do it because it becomes a town road and then they have to, you know, potentially they could get, now get a second house because now it's a town, town parcel or piece of land, so they could pension, it won't be town.
No.
This, this...
It's not a town, we'd have to accept it here at town meeting as a town road.
Oh, it's not a town road? Okay, so...
Town property, but not...
So we wouldn't be liable for, for the plowing and all that kind of stuff? Okay, thank you.
Ann Langless, Union Street. In reading Article 19, it talks about the dam and it talks about acquisition of said land. There is no word in here that says "bridge." Is the bridge included?
Over like the actual spillway?
Over the dam itself?
Yeah, I believe so.
Yeah, it's in that parcel, yes.
So there's no way that we're also going to get stuck with a poor, I guess dilapidated bridge that we're also going to have to repair? So when the last inspection was done for the dam, did that inspection year after year also include the, the, the bridge itself?
Yeah, I think it's, it's part of, I think it's listed as part of the spillway. I'd have to double check, but I'll make...
Yeah, because if that's the case...
That is the spillway that the bridge goes over, so I believe that's part of it.
Right, but if it's not the case, then we're looking at added extra costs depending on the condition of the bridge itself.
You better can pull that up.
Just underlying, thank you.
Monica Ryan, Laurel Street. Right down from the dam is where I live, so hopefully it won't go. So I wanted to verify the piece of property. It looks like it's around just the dam, so the first 25 feet from Route 20 to the beginning of the property is not going to be ours, right?
From Route 20 over, we'll, we'll have a deed of right of way.
We'll have a right of way, just as they'll have a right of way over the dam to get to the house.
Correct.
I understand that because I have the same on my property. And we share our plowing. Now, it would, I would imagine, we don't really need plowing for our use in the winter. So I would imagine he would continue to do the plowing for himself for the whole road. And that would be nice to put in as part of the negotiation. But I am concerned about the maintenance and the cost. I would love to have the town own it, but we are taking costs, you know, we're, we're, it's a benefit to the, to current owner right now for us to pick it up because of the expenses. And it will be expenses for the town. And we don't know if there's going to be a major repair, that it may run over what we think is $10,000 every other year. So I think we, the other thing is, the test has to be done every other year at the property owner's expense and the property owner usually hires the inspector. It's got to be someone who the state approves. But I personally think, just like buying a house, we should get our own inspection and make that as, you know, have them pay for it or something with somebody that we choose. Because I think we need to do our due diligence. I'm not sure that the dam is safe. If we buy a house, we want to get a house inspector in there to check everything out? I don't think I can rely on this company's report. I would rather have another report done for the town. And lastly, I would like to see that part of the negotiations, we go back to the table, and I agree with so many of these other people who have said, I would like to see our old rights restored as far as access to the beach. We used to go there from spring until fall. We could see the birds, you know, the new spring flowers. We could see, go there at, you know, seven o'clock at night on the, you know, before the beach season opened. We could stay there till half hour past sunset and there was never really any problems. And we never needed a policeman or anybody at the gate. And all of these things that we've had to are, have been very, you know, expensive and time-consuming. And I will say one other thing. When I was on the Board of Public Works, we were assured by another member of the Board of Public Works at the time, Roger Schur, that the swale that everyone bottoms their car out on was going to get fixed after the town repaired the portion of the road which led from his house up to the Hyland Farm property. It had washed out one year and we had to do a major repair, even though it was on his property. We agreed to do that, and it's in the minutes of those Board of Public Work meetings, that he said, well, if you fix that, I'll repair the swale, which causes all of the cars to bottom out. We lived up to our end of the bargain, but he never did. So I'd like you to go back and enforce that. That's in the minutes. I'll be happy to look them up. But I know that he promised he would do that and he just never did. So I'd like to see the gate come down. If we're going to have access to the dam, what's going to go on with that gate? Things to think about. Gate should come down. Thank you.
Yeah, just a clarification on the parcel. There's two parcels. One, there are two different owners, they are related, father and son, but, so the dam is one owner, the other property around it is another owner. So they, the owner of the dam is looking to, had offered it to the town first and is looking to sell it. And just, just wanted to clarify that part. Separate, separate lot from the, the owner of the house that's there.
Cornelia Kalisher. So I called today to find out, got a lot of information. Thank you, Chris. It is a lot of money each year, but not really when you think about how many times we've had at town meeting, people speaking about, oh, we should have way back when bought that dam. And so, you know, we'd have control of future use and how it impacts other things in town. And so in that case, I would say that I would recommend doing it. But I do hope that we do have a bigger negotiation because it really, long-term affects these for the beach, is why we use it, fishing, I suppose, too. And they could always put a gate at the other side of the dam, so that's not going to change that, potentially, hopefully not. But I do think it's really, really important that this not just be sold to another private person in town and then we go, oh, shoot, I wish we had bought it. So that's my, my thinking. Thanks.
Ann Langless, I guess this is a question for Jeremiah. The statement of we will have right of way, is that just, is that right of way access just for towns to, the Town of Lee to be able to maintain it? Or is that we will have right of way for the residents to stand on that dam if we were to get in a rowboat from the causeway or from the boat ramp to be able to go there and fish again? When this property changed hands originally from the Eagle Mill to this personal property owner, Joe Sorrentino, one of the very few meetings that I got that man to come to years ago, along with Joe Polari showed up here and talked about how they used to fish on that dam as children. And they were heartbroken, how no one could ever fish on there again because it was owned by a personal, single person. And the second question, part of the, we will have right of way? So if it is not accessible to the public, that we cannot go there and fish standing on it, I am aware that the Leahy family is currently getting sued personally by one, I will not name them here, I promise. The Leahy family is personally being sued for access over the properties of the road to get to the reservoir that they so generously donated to the town. My concern too is, is that something else that could happen if this property is open for our use? And that's if we pass the vote to purchase this property? Thank you.
Well, to the first question, as I understand it, we're going to buy, buying the dam, that there's two parcels. So the parcel that the, the residence is constructed on is a separate parcel. The dam is broken out as its own parcel. We're going to, we're going to own that. So my understanding is yes, you're going to have fishing access off the dam and on the rocks and it will stop over that spillway. The rights, the rights of way you're talking about, I think, are to the infrastructure that is not on the dam, including all the way down to the Eagle Mill for potential hydroelectric generation. I don't know that there's, I, I, I can't speak to whether there's a real prospect of that. I don't know what the zebra mussels do to that. I don't know if they clog the pipes so you can't generate that kind of velocity with the water, but I, but who knows? That would be for a, a mind that, that tinkers with hydro power, so not mine. In terms of the other piece, that, that unfortunate piece of litigation is being disputed. I don't even think it should, I thought, I moved to dismiss it because it's clear to me that there's a statute that prevents adverse possession against the town that involves certain types of property, including land that's held for drinking water purposes. But it's a more isolated property than this. I don't, they, we document with Hyland that this is a permissive use and there's, there's, this is really unique. If, if we end up owning the dam, you're going to have three property owners involved. Someone's going to have a real set of hurdles to get over to say that they've, they've adversely used for 20 years without permission that land, especially if it's open to the public. The water treatment plant and the easement up there is not open to the public. So all the use, so it's really different. So all the use, so it's really different, and because it's all permissive use there. Even now, it's pretty, there's a lot of permissive use there. People still fish there as far as I can see. When I fish from, I fish at the, over on White Bridge where I see you a lot, and I fish on the, at the boat ramp. But I could see people over there. I don't know how they get there or if they get kicked out, but it looks like people still do it. But yes, we would own the land, the actual parcel itself, so that would be, that would, I mean, I can't imagine the board's going to say no one can fish there, so.
Ian, on your other question, too, I did just pull up the report, and they do have the, there's a section on structures that does include that bridge, so it is in that.
Can I just ask one question? When was this property divided into 41 and 41A?
When?
You know, was it always like that?
I couldn't tell you.
It was, it was after Schweitzer sold it.
After Schweitzer sold it. Why would we do that?
It was, it was done as an approval-not-required plan, so it's not discretionary. You don't have a choice. So if you, if someone can break down a property into two lots, they're able to do that.
Well, I mean, you don't even have the right frontage. I don't know how that ever happened. You don't even have the right frontage. Just curious. Thank you.
Any other comments before we move on?
Karen Molino. I think, I think there's a lot of questions on this, but like you said, I think this is an opportunity that if we don't take, we'll look back, like some of this other stuff that happened, and say, why? I mean, we may never get to the lake again if somebody else buys this. So I said, we should go for it, and if it's $10,000 every two years split by two towns, it's nothing on our budget here. So yes, there's a lot of questions and a lot of things. And I think, I think that the town should own the controlling of the water. I don't think a private person should, and I think we should definitely grab that. Whatever little access to the beach it gives us, we got to grab it.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and move on to Article 20. Bob, I'll go ahead and pass this one off to you. You were a part of this legislation change. If you would like to go ahead and just say a few things about it.
Sure. This came out of, Town of Lee has a Board of Public Works. I think most, if not all, towns in the Commonwealth at one time had a Board of Public Works to oversee the Department of Public Works. When many and most, not all, towns went to town managers, town administrators, a lot of towns, in fact, the vast majority of towns, did away with their Board of Public Works because there were overlapping and conflicting responsibilities. And we've run into that in Lee, and there was some conflict, overlapping responsibilities. And this is just a way to clean that up. I want to say personally, I'm very grateful to the members of the Board of Public Works. They provide a great service to the town. They work with Lenny, with Chris. They make recommendations on the roads. They make recommendations on vehicles, purchases by the DPW. But this will allow a delineation of responsibilities. Ultimately, the final decision would lay with Chris and Lenny, but we have a, they are a very valuable asset, I think. They're very knowledgeable people on the board. They're very responsible. They make great recommendations. They actually do the heavy lifting, the legwork in making those recommendations, and I would like to see them to continue. So this basically is a redelineation of responsibilities that we sat down, I sat down with members of the Board of Public Works, and we've come to this understanding. And I'm hoping that we can get it passed so they can continue on doing the good work that they do. Any questions from anybody? Comments?
I'll take the municipal aggregation, if you want to come back. So this next, Article 21, is an article about municipal aggregation, electricity aggregation, that is. And really, what we're looking to do potentially, if we would pass this article, is to enter in an agreement with a company to negotiate kilowatt-hour rates for residential electrical rates. And a lot of, a lot of other towns do this, and they actually have negotiated rates that are, some are a little lower, some are quite a bit lower than what we're paying. So we thought it was a smart idea to take a look at this and see if the town would be interested in entering into an agreement to hopefully bring down our electricity rate. And my understanding is that we would enter into an agreement for a period of time, I think it's three years, not to exceed three years.
Maximum, yeah. If rates were looking really low and really good and we were able to lock in a three-year, we could. If they were looking kind of not so great, you know, we could do it for a year or a year and a half.
So we would lock, the idea is that if we can find the right sources of energy that would bring our rate down and lock that price in for everybody in town, you would be automatically entered unless you wanted to opt out of this. And you would receive a letter in the mail, and if you, if you don't respond to the letter, you're automatically would be in the, in the program. If you want, again, if you wanted to opt out for whatever reason, you would have that, that right to do that. Is there anything else?
Yeah, just basically, right now, Eversource, every six months goes out and gets a rate from a supplier, and whatever that rate is, that gets passed along. So this would enable us to negotiate our own rates. Again, as Sean said, you don't have to be part of it. You can stick with the Eversource rates, just as they are, which change every six months. They go, they're winter rates and summer rates. There's no guarantee we're going to save money, but that, all the towns that have done this have saved money. So there's a really good chance you'll have a better rate. For example, right now, in the town of Lee, we pay 22 cents a kilowatt. If you were living in Lennox, under aggregation, you'd be paying nine cents right now, so. It will take a little time, I will say. It's not going to happen immediately. When we pass this, or if we pass this, they should say, this will go to the Department of Public Utilities, and they then have to do their thing, which could take several months. And then we contract with, we're on a countywide contract with Colonial Power. Or we would be on that. There is a countywide contract right now. We've already approached them to be part of that. It's already been negotiated with the other towns, so Colonial Power would take over that, that rate purchasing for us, so.
How you doing, Chris? Buck Donovan, District One, just for old time's sake. Lander Road. How about for net metering? Will that change the rate there also?
Yeah, I, they did talk about this, and I don't remember off the top. I don't think it would affect anything on your, if you had solar. You know, it might have, you would, the amount you're paying for would change, or the amount you get would change, but it would, it would be proportional to what you're doing now, I believe.
Okay.
Quick question. What about, you know, when there's a snowstorm and things fail? Been through Colonial, they've come out and fixed the poles or no?
No, I think that's still the electrical company's infrastructure to repair and maintain.
Well, right now, when it, when it goes down on my street, I call Eversource.
You would still call Eversource. Eversource is still going to be your, your delivery person. They still own the infrastructure, but instead of buying Eversource's contracted supply, we're buying our supply, but Eversource is delivering it. So you'll see on your bill, a supply cost and a delivery, you're still going to pay Eversource their delivery. You're still going to call them for outages. They're still going to maintain it, but your supply cost is what's going to change.
Okay, so they're responsible for the poles and all that?
They don't, they don't do their own supply now anyway. They just go out every six months to say, well, who can give us a rate?
All right, thank you.
Karen Molino. Does this, does the, it's a new concept. Does the rate that you get affected by the amount of townspeople that opt in?
I don't, I don't know. Good question.
We can look into that.
Yeah, it's a good question.
I would think it probably would because you're trying to buy more. The more, the more power you're buying, the better rate you're usually going to get because we're buying it as a, as a larger group, if that makes sense. Very rarely do people opt out. I mean, you certainly can, but, you know.
I think we, I think we need to underscore that you don't opt in. You only opt out. Yeah, that's so, you know, that's all. It might make a difference.
Gordon, I'm going to pass the stretch code.
I'm going to give it back to Bob. I'm not going to talk about it.
I'm going to pretend, I'm not going to pretend that I completely understand the stretch energy code.
We do have our building inspector, building official here.
That would be great.
I did see, I thought I saw Matt here earlier.
Good evening. What do you need to know?
Just to maybe explain to us where we're at with the building code right now and what the stretch energy code would do to anybody who'd want to pull a building permit or build a house or anything like that.
So the stretch energy code is basically part of an agreement that the town makes with the state that makes them a green community. So in order to be a green community, or by doing this, you become a green community. But I believe that allows the town to get money allocated, right?
We're eligible for more money.
Yeah, so from enforcement, you know, from my, in my world, I don't deal with that, with that part of it. So the stretch code essentially is just holding builders to a higher energy efficiency. So it depends on exactly what you're doing. Gordon can speak to this as well. But, you know, for a new build, you're essentially hiring another consultant that comes out and will do their own third-party certifications and inspections as far as energy and insulation is concerned. So that's essentially what the stretch code is. Right now, it also holds you up to the 2021 Energy Code, where we're in the eighteen. Of course I can. So that's, that's the biggest difference, is that it's going to, it's going to hold builders to a higher energy efficiency now.
By adopting this, we're increasing the energy efficiency standard.
Correct, correct.
In the building codes. And becoming a green community, which.
Right, which can open up the town to other funding.
Right. Thank you, Matt.
Matt, just to clarify for everyone here, Matt is the commissioner for Lee and Lennox. So Lennox does have stretch code, so our building department is doing stretch code in Lennox, but not in Lee. So they are familiar with the difference between them. We are going to likely make a, there's one correction we need to make to the effective date of this, which would, it now says July of 2023. It would go effective at July 2024. The reason for that is just for anything that's already in progress, or, you know, any, any buildings that someone's already has designed for and that sort of thing. If we did it that quick, they may have to go back and change everything around that they, that they've already paid for. So we would have a year to finish up any permitted projects before that would take effect. So that way, people would know when they're going to build that, if they're building, it's going to happen in, after July 2024, they would do that. Now it would be kind of just giving them about three or four weeks' notice, so.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think these next two, oh, we got a question, sorry.
My understanding is that if you, like, say, build an addition on your house, that then you'd have to increase your standards to this, right, for that addition? So it would cost the homeowner more, which, but it would help the town to get grants, which would then eventually help you. Is that right?
As the homeowner? Yeah, potentially.
Also, the idea of, well, it might be more of an upfront cost. There should be energy savings, so over the long term, you would recoup that in paying less for heat.
Thanks.
So Article 23 and 24, we have some proposed zoning bylaw changes, and we have a couple of planning board members here. Buck, if you want to speak to these, go ahead.
I'll explain a little bit. The first one is, with site plan downtown, we've always been lately been putting them, the dumpsters have to be enclosed and blocked from view. We've required that kind of on every site plan for the past few years, and we thought it'd be a good time to just get it in our bylaws. That's the 23, and then, I'll speak to 24 when we get there. But I have a question for Jeremiah. We're going to have to do an amendment on this, it looks like. Sorry. On B, the last sentence, it says, this requirement does not apply to residential uses. And we'd like to add in there, put in there, one and two-family residential uses. You think that's too much of an amendment, or would it fly?
The issue I have with that is that's going to end in, end up with a more restrictive bylaw, so, right? So you exempted residential uses.
Yes.
And you want to do an amendment on the floor that makes it more restrictive?
Yep.
That might be a problem.
Well, it's a clarification. I mean, the spirit of it was when we did it, but it, looking at it in definitions of residential.
And we've done the final warrant, right?
We haven't signed the final warrant yet.
We can fix it for the final warrant.
Can we do that?
Yeah.
Yeah, we haven't signed the warrant. We were planning on signing it on Tuesday.
Whatever you want.
Okay. Can that be in there, Chris?
I don't know. I mean, it's a difference, it's a difference between the town meeting and the public hearing. I mean, I think, I think folks were on notice for the public hearing. If you make that amendment for the, before the final warrant, you should be okay.
Yeah, we can, we can change that, and I believe that would be, so, like, it would apply to an apartment building? Is that what you're getting at versus?
Yes.
Okay.
When, do we need another meeting before that? Jeremiah?
Excuse me?
Do we need a meeting, or can we do that at this level?
I think you can do it at the town meeting, yeah.
You're saying amend it at the town meeting? Or we can amend it before we sign the warrant?
You're not going to meet before the town meeting, right? So yeah, if you want a, if you want a different bylaw, you guys have to meet before they do the final warrant.
Yes, which is Tuesday?
Signing is scheduled for Tuesday.
We were planning on, yeah, signing it on Tuesday.
It's going to be tough to do that.
So we're going to, we'll probably withdraw this. We'll see.
Can I just make a comment about this? Gail Cerise, West Park Street. I don't understand how it's more restrictive because right now, all the residents would, would be required to have these enclosures.
No, that's opposite, yeah.
Am I reading it wrong?
Yeah, B, this requirement does not apply to residential uses. And what they're, what Buck is just saying is that it would not apply to single or, what was the?
Two and two-family.
Or two-family residential. So like, multifamily residential units would, would be. Yeah, not exempt to dumpster enclosures, right?
It looked to me like it was becoming less restrictive. Okay.
Actually, Peter just reminded me, when we were talking about our procedure to handle this, we did vote in our last meeting. So we're, I believe we'd be all. So we're, I believe we'd be all set for you to change this. Okay?
Very good.
Yeah.
But we'll change that before signing.
Any other comments, questions of the 23?
Oh, and just want to let you know on the summary section, you have 23 and 24 switched.
Ah, okay.
Okay?
So, so the next, the next article is about split zones. And my understanding is that some properties are, lie in two different zones and this is sort of trying to address that, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. Mainly in all the sections of, that have RB, residential business in town, 102 going out Route 20. The lot will be literally split in half or just a quarter of it, you know? And it's really been problematic for, you know, over the years. Most towns have dealt with this, we never have. And this is our, we're attempting to deal with it now. There's also some parts, like on Spring Street, you deal with that. Off E Street, it's also split. There's quite a few places because the, the zoning line is just arbitrary. They just, you know, so it doesn't go by property lines.
So if there's no other questions about the zoning bylaw articles, I'll just move on to 25. 25 is really an article to just recognize Lee as a pollinator-friendly town, correct? It's just saying we're, 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 we're friendly, we, we like the bees, is basically what we're saying.
Yeah, it's a resolution, it doesn't change any laws or anything. It's just a, recognizing the, the sediment of the town. I believe, Catherine, if you're still here, if you want to mention anything from Greener Gateway had proposed this, but.
Yeah, I'm Catherine, I live on High Street. And the Lee Greener Gateway Committee has done a lot of work on zero waste and sustainability. And we wanted to include something around habitat. And we, so like, like Chris said, this isn't gonna cost money or anything like that. It's just gonna try and direct funds that may be planting trees, you know, doing native trees that would support more of the pollinators, that support our bird population and, you know, just create a even more beautiful town. Also, it's a way to just help educate people that we have a lot of beautiful habitat around here, but it's not necessarily supporting our native flora and fauna. So this is an opportunity then, if we can pass this resolution, it's, it will give us a chance to then get questions and, and answer them so people can understand the ways that we, as a town, but also as residents can, can support, you know, native habitat and, and hence increase the sustainability of our town. Does anybody have any questions about that or?
Great idea.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Catherine. Next, we have a citizens petition and if, I mean, I, I don't really know what, how to speak to this, so I don't know if the petitioners are here. I see them. Come on down if you wanted to say something.
Hello. Buenas noches, good evening. Can I take this off? Okay. So I'm Annalisa Jacobson and I live here in South Lee. And my friend who's in the back, who's not from South Lee, but is a longtime activist for this issue. We've been organizing around the issue of the flag and seal of Massachusetts and changing it for quite a few years, but the actual campaign has been going on for over 50 years. So I'm not sure if people are aware, but the flag and seal of Massachusetts currently is on police cars, school buildings, bridges, you know, courthouses. It's, it's really all over the place. The current flag and seal actually features a broadsword of Miles Standish, who happens to be one of my distant relatives. So I feel even more strongly about this because of that. Basically, it's a broadsword over a Native American person's head currently. And after, you know, a really long struggle with this on January 6, 2021, the Massachusetts Legislature, Legislature approved a bill to establish a changed flag and seal. But we have been going across the state, town by town, to get towns' input and, and vote on this, which will strengthen the, the cause of it. And one of the things that I'm excited about as a, you know, educator and a community leader is that it will likely be our elementary school children who help design a new logo for our state flag and seal. So I would really like to see something that represents our growing diversity and our original diversity. You know, Native American people have been here, you know, before any of us. And, you know, we have a state that is full of beautiful diverse peoples and it's very important that we represent that in, in any, you know, logo that represents our state. So that's what this is about. Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
And if he could say a couple of words?
With the chair's permission, although I'm not a resident of Lee.
Please feel free to speak.
My name's David Detmold, I'm a friend of Anna's, of course, but have been working with cities and towns to bring the same resolution language forward at town meetings and city councils for the last four or five years. And currently, there have been 59 cities and towns that have voted in favor of changing the flag and seal of Massachusetts for the reasons Anna said. And only two have turned it down so far. And we very much hopefully will join that growing number. The only slight amendment I would make to what Anna just said is that the bill the legislature passed finally in, on January 6, actually, of 2021, just before the terrible riot broke out in Washington, was to establish a special commission. It is not a commission that is empowered to change the flag and seal, but it is to issue a recommendation back to the legislature. And so the voice of each and every town on this issue is needed. This is the first time in 140 years that Massachusetts has taken a serious look at its state symbol. And as Anna mentioned, a hand holding a sword over the head of a native person has been the subject of protest for many, many years by our indigenous brothers and sisters. So thank you very much. That special commission is due to make its recommendations back to the legislature in the middle of November of this year. So this is a very timely vote for Lee, thank you.
Muchas gracias.
Just a clarification with both of the resolutions, that they're both non-binding. So it's just, again, expressing the sediment of the town, we're voting for this. It's gonna show whether Lee supports that or not, so.
Well, that brings us to the end of the, the warrant here. Town meeting's gonna be May, is it 11th?
11th, yeah.
May 11th. And we hope to see all of you there and please get, get people out here because, you know, we, this is an open town meeting. So everybody who comes is a resident can have a vote, so.
That's seven o'clock in this room, May 11th.
More advertising? Thanks, everyone, for coming.